Welcome, everybody. This is our study session, Spokane City Council. I'm Lori Kinnear, Councilmember Pro Tem. And we have three council members here in person, and we're waiting for two more to show up. But we're going to go ahead and get started. We like to start on time. We have three items on our agenda. And the first person up is going to be Carl Otterstrom from STA. He's going to talk about STA Connect, the 2035 Strategic Plan. Welcome, Mr. Otterstrom. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear, and members of the City Council.
Can we have you adjust that? So you're -- yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Great. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you and discuss and receive your input on STA's efforts to develop its Connect 2035 Strategic Plan. And just as we've gone around, I've gone around the region, I've shared with everyone that STA is your public transportation system. And that's particularly the case with the city of Spokane. We've had transit in this city dating back 135 years, and that STA is of that lineage. And we, over the last year, all those present are members of the STA Board of Directors, and so you're very familiar with the effort of Phase One Strategic Foundation, which was the outcome of our first phase of Connect 2035 Strategic Planning. So this strategic plan, we're looking at what is in the future for transit over the next 10 years. And the first phase that we completed last year developed the revised agency's mission statement and vision statement, and developed goals, strategies, and some headline performance measures that would guide us in the second phase of the plan, which will officially kick off next month. And in that phase will be, and I'll talk more about this today, identifying, evaluating, prioritizing the program of projects and actions and initiatives that we take on, and continue extensive community engagement. So recapping our first phase of the planning effort, we interviewed a number of STA Board, all the STA Board members, as well as 27 community leaders from various organizations, both nonprofit, governmental, educational. We had an online survey, receiving feedback on what's important to our bus riders in the community with 849 participants, held six listening sessions, and held other activities at some of the summer events last year. The listening sessions included us going to organizations and actually having them invite their constituents and ensuring that, to ensure that we had good participation, we actually paid people for their time or worked with the organization to pay or reimburse in some fashion for their time. We also held four STA Board of Director workshops and had employee engagement activities there in that picture in the bottom left in our garage with the beautiful City Line bus in the background. So what we heard from people, especially the bus riders, they want buses that come more often. That's the number one priority. Wasn't a shocker to us. It's been something we've been working on for a long time. But it also, it comes up in our regular surveys of our bus riders. Also, people want us to go to new places. Where else can we serve? What other places and destinations aren't served by transit today? They also want us to have service all hours of the week and better, you know, more times during the week, nights and weekends. And then this came out really out of the interviews with community leaders was seeing STA, want to see STA as a leader in sustainability and climate change issues. So the updated vision statement, connecting everyone to opportunity, that replaced the older vision statement, which was to aspire to be a source of pride for the region. Of course, I think we still aspire to do that. But this is more clearly focused on our, what we do as a transit agency is connecting. So our mission statement was updated, and the key point there was adding the word inclusive. So the plan has three goals. Goal one, elevate the customer experience. The second goal, lead and collaborate with community partners to enhance the quality of life in our region. The third goal, strengthen our capacity to anticipate and respond to the demands of the region. So the first goal has four strategies. Expanding and adapt, adaptive mobility options to attract and serve more people. Second strategy, advance frequent, easy-to-use, fast and reliable service. Third, deliver an outstanding door-to-door experience. And most of our service is not door-to-door, but the experience of riding transit is a door-to-door experience, right? You leave the house, did I miss the bus already? How do I get there? What's the trip planner say? Do I have, you know, do I have my fare? And so that experience, how do we, how do we ensure from each end of that, it's a great experience? And finally, create a welcoming, comfortable, and it's, and secure environment for all customers. Goal two, lead and collaborate with community partners to enhance the quality of life in our region. Collaborate to enhance access to transit. What does that look like? That's ensuring we're working together on prioritizing sidewalk improvements, pedestrian safety things to get people to bus stops. Supporting community partners to amplify community benefits. We've got lots of great transit service where people already are. How do we make sure that they have a bus pass in their hand? How do we make sure that there is, it's promoted and enhanced at their organizations? The third, proactively initiate partnerships to promote and help employers, service providers, and residential development to locate near high-frequency transit. It's one of the reasons we have been involved in the conversations about housing. We've wrapped that up recently. Brian Jennings is Deputy Director for Community Development here, and one of his roles is on really driving transit-oriented development, both what STA can do and what we can help our partners do. Third goal, strengthen our capacity to anticipate and respond to the demands of the region. This develop, prepare, prepare, and empower our team members. This speaks to how do we ensure that the professional team, drivers, everyone feels empowered to do their job and has the tools and resources to do that. Secondly, engage in proactive assessment and planning and deliver strategic, long-term investments most beneficial to our communities. And the third, exemplify financial stewardship to maintain public trust and organizational sustainability. And as you know, STA has basically forever been a debt-free organization, and that has positioned it to be able to be strategic and, and long-term in our thinking and actions. The overall project schedule is shown here on this slide. And getting, beginning in July, this Phase Two effort, continuing until the end of next year. Just a few highlights, you know, it's, these charts can be a little hard to read sometimes or too much information. But just the highlights is community engagement is shown throughout. There's some green areas where we're saying this is where we're really going to hit it heavier. And then there's kind of a waterfall of activities when it comes to initial efforts in understanding some baseline funding assumptions and our comprehensive capacity analysis. And that's going to be a review of our staff, interviews, assessment, our capabilities, what's missing in our capabilities or tools or resources, the fixed route network assessment. Looking, having a third party as part of the team look at our, the effectiveness of our system, what's missing, what's, what's working well. And then working with the board and the community and developing a list of initiatives. Those could be new projects, policy changes, programs, other activities that drive success in the goals for the next 10 years. Evaluating that with criteria that are developed, and then ultimately pulling that into a plan based on, you know, refining that list and filtering it based on evaluation criteria. So our goal today, and sharing this with you, is to ask some questions of you. So many of you have already have provided feedback over the last many months. But it's another opportunity, and we've actually, earlier this spring, we presented to Mayor Woodward and her cabinet and got feedback from them. And you're the last of all the jurisdictions we've spoken to. We were scheduled initially in April. But these four questions, I'll read all four of them. But I'd like to take the rest of our time and hearing your feedback and taking notes and helping us as we craft with our consultants, Sam Schwartz Engineering, all the, the action plan for each of the steps and outreach activities. So the four questions, how do you see these goals and the strategies aligning with the city's priorities for the next 10 years? What opportunities do you see for the city and STA to collaborate in the next 10 years? How would you like to participate in Phase Two of Connect 2035? And what public engagement strategies have worked well with your citizens? And that last question, we've got a lot of good input from the different jurisdictions around the community, the region, that, you know, tactics are different around the region, and it's really helpful to hear. So, but that.
Okay, thank you. So here's our chance, folks, to bombard Carl with questions because we know there's some challenges right now with driver shortages and so forth. So who wants to start off? Go ahead.
Well, Carl, no, I'll go straight to my standard question about community engagements, the BIPOC community. Really, how, how deep was that outreach and inclusiveness? And what we struggle with here is language access to get that information to the riders as they go. So I guess I'm asking three questions. So just answer whichever way you want. And then, of course, we look at transit development as well. And really, how much closer do we need to be working with STA or STA with the city as we plan our growth? Because there's some areas that are growing. As you know, we hear a lot from the 195 corridor. So there are pockets of our community that don't have public transportation that continues to bubble up. And how can we work together to meet that need?
Yeah, so as far as outreach, that's a particular emphasis in our outreach plans and at least how we've scoped them. And now, as the consultants come onboard next month, we'll be driving home that point. We did get some great feedback, actually, from mayor's staff, cabinet-level staff on some of the things that have worked well. And going, for instance, marshallese speakers going to their events, right? Which are often in the parks. And hearing from them. Language access, we do provide translation at events. Now, how do we make sure that we, we kind of proactively provide it rather than wait for somebody to request? I think that's, that would be something we can explore in this stage. So kind of mixing, what I hear, both you're asking, how did we do it well? And how are you going to make sure we do it even better?
Right.
In the next phase?
Do I ask you, you know, on the front of the buses, when, you know, there, it's just going across bus with parking right? Could that be in a different language as it goes across the front of the buses? And then we have English, could it be in Spanish as it's talking about what the next destination could be? And that's just off the top of my head, Carl. So you can get back with me on that later.
Sure, we can, I could get back to you on that.
Councilmember Wilkerson, I lost track of all the questions you asked.
Oh, sorry, so I.
Did he answer all of them?
I haven't yet, no.
He answered all of them, and thank you, Carl.
Well, TOD, I think you brought up TOD.
Right.
And I think that's something, again, and part of this plan, and having it elevated as a strategy is really exciting. The board in 2021 did set aside some funding to do a pilot with transit-oriented development and actually acquire some properties. And so, again, back to Brian Jennings' role, he formerly was with the Spokane Housing Authority. His new role, he's going to be helping us acquire property for both transit purposes outright, as well as how do we leverage this to integrate with planning efforts by the city? And I do meet with, and Brian and I both meet with Spencer Gardner on a regular basis. And so we're really trying to integrate that at the ground level.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. So with, so two things. One, first on that, that point, are you going to be looking, especially at those places like we've discussed in the past, where, you know, the Central City Line disrupted a front yard? And like, that property could have been a viable option for some other use related to transit? Is that kind of what you're thinking? That if you're going to be disrupting anyway, that you would do something more substantive?
I think part of the strategy will be to flesh that out. I think there are, you know, seated by your comments or question years ago at this point, we have actually talked about this. Wellesley is probably one of the best examples because our bus stops, we, we aren't able to put shelters and improvements on Wellesley because there's no right-of-way to do that. And if to get more right-of-way will require basically being in somebody's front yard within inches of their, their front windows. And so that, that's potentially an opportunity to look at those, those kind of edge cases of stops as an opportunity to, to invest in, and potentially, you know, redevelop for multifamily housing.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the, the smart way to go about it. And then the second question, to piggyback on, on Councilman Wilkerson, the pockets of folks that are underserved. And again, we've discussed this in the past. El Estero, the low-income complex there in, I guess it's kind of in the Logan neighborhood. But they, you know, obviously still would love to have service, and we've discussed the challenges there. But at one point, you were talking about a hybrid midway model where you would have sort of a van that could take folks when there is these large gaps in accessibility to a bus stop. The van could come, pick them up, and essentially just take them to the bus stop. So, and they're, they're about one mile door to bus stop where they're at.
Yeah, and I, I didn't say enough about Strategy 1.1 here, expand and adapt mobility options to attract and serve more people. So part of this is not just looking, how do we expand bus routes? But how do we expand mobility options? So there are, that's an example, a lot of the 195 corridor area where the topography is such, the road network is very challenging for people to access a fixed route bus, would be opportunities to explore, you know, something that is app-based, that takes you to a transit hub, then you're able to, to take transit across the region at that point. So that's, that is on, kind of on the docket for exploring.
Still working on that. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll also point out, we did get a grant a few years ago, which has been on the back burner for actually looking at five-mile parking right as a mobility hub, kind of a test pilot, at least not, not to implement, but to explore the planning of that. So it's just, it's a small grant. But we hope to be doing the RFP later this summer.
Great.
Councilmember Supone or Bingo, any questions?
Yeah, well, or, or some of your questions that you asked us that we didn't really answer. I think a big one that we talk about a lot at the city is trying to do density here in the city and encouraging people to build up that transit-oriented development. But I just came from like the Housing Subcommittee that we have here, and their struggle is accessibility, I guess, is part of it. And it's stuff that you've seen in other, other outreach you've done. But also just like convenience factor and time it takes to get places continues to be a struggle for people. Someone said like, I work downtown, my kid is out towards the valley, it takes two hours to go with connections. And like, that's not feasible to, to take the bus to go get them from school. And so that's one example. But I hear that frequently, is people worried about that. And then the tenants' union and other renters were definitely advocating for a need for low-income fare or fares based on income and the need. We're, we're also having discussions about parking and trying to reduce the number of parking in our city, which relies on transit as kind of that follow-through. And so people are like, well, we can't address our parking at the city until it's more convenient to take transit. So that's one of the areas, I think, that collaborate for the next 10 years.
That's great.
I, I've got a question. It's just logistics. So if you get a smaller van taking somebody or people to a hub, how do you make that an efficient use of time? Because, I mean, I'm just doing it in my head, loading people on a van, getting it to the hub, unloading them, getting them back on another bus to take them to wherever they're going to go. That's a time suck. And the whole point is people want convenience and efficiency, and they, they want to get to their destination in a reasonable, reasonable amount of time. So how do you logistically do that? And would there be alternatives such as using smaller buses to get, where, where there's infrastructure doesn't allow the bigger buses? To just, don't bother with the hub, just go from point A to point B, skip the hub? So that's my.
Yeah, so, so the transit agencies have been exploring this in the state of Washington. The system in the tri-cities, they have less mature transit systems. So they, they've actually started, started this program with, with vans, and basically the, the, it's been successful even feeding into their hubs because the travel time or the wait time is really low on those, those shuttles. But the cost is tremendously higher than, so our, our cost pre-pandemic was about $5 a ride, now it's about $10, $11 a ride in terms of lower ridership. We're almost back to 80%. And then, of course, inflation. But those costs per ride in the $5 to $12 range are really efficient. And the systems, these, these kind of on-demand, even when they're sharing a ride, is in the $50 to $80 a person or a trip. And so there's an opportunity to cost like, well, in the end, are we just providing on Uber or Lyft? Or are we providing public transportation? And so finding that kind of balance. So in the case of the tri-cities, they, at first, they were offering people like, kind of point-to-point. And people will love it, you know, especially because they're, it was like $2 a ride. Well, that wasn't sustainable because it was number, it was making this transit system, rest of it, less efficient. But also, the cost of the demand was going to outstrip their ability to provide that service because it was basically a taxi that was $2. So that, kind of, being able to see that new mobility as an extension of the transit system, to say, this is, when we get more people in the same vehicle, there's, this is, that's more of a sustainable mode. Even though an electric car is, takes less carbon fuel, but it still has emissions effectively from the tires. It still creates congestion on the freeway if all these people are just one or two people in a car. So all those things still point to the bigger buses. In addition to our major cost with, with fixed route is not the size of the bus, it's the operator and the people. Which, which is good. That's, that's why transit has such a great economic benefit in terms of a multiplier effect because it is very people-centric in terms of its operation.
I would challenge that a little bit, too. I mean, the ferry system is a huge money suck. It's part of our highway system in the state of Washington. But when you think about what it costs to run ferries back and forth between the islands, oh my goodness. So there, there has to be some kind of price point where we're serving the citizens, and we're going to eat the costs. And after a while, people are going to get used to that. It's going to attract more people because it's more convenient. It's going to reduce congestion in our roads. So there's, there's going to be a point where it's going to be beneficial for everybody. And yeah, it's going to cost a little bit more, just like the ferry system does. So just going to put that out there. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I would just say, I mean, I agree. I would love to have a, a small bus serving El Estero tomorrow, obviously. I just want them to have access, and that's the only thing. But I think, my thinking is, the way this really makes sense to me is it would really just be a stopgap in those few areas, whatever you identify as being a priority, where you really have that missing piece of access to the bus. And so it, I think, you know, you're right. You have to balance everything out and make sure it all, all works. But, you know, and again, I just come back to the El Estero case because it's, it's, it's just frustrating. You know, they're, they're one mile from the closest bus stop. And in the summer, you know, for those who are, are mobile, it's not the biggest deal. But in the winter, it's really a hindrance for everybody who lives there. And there are a number of folks who are there who are disabled or have other challenges. And so having that mile gap is a challenge. And so if there could be any intermediary or intermediate option, I would, I would take it for their, for their benefit.
Could you describe that?
But a small bus would be great.
Describe what that is a little bit.
The El Estero? It's just a, a complex. Yeah, it's just a complex on Upriver, just not too far from Avista, that has a lot of very heavily subsidized and low-income individuals living there. Many straight out of homelessness. And so it's just a very challenging area there. And then next door to them is a senior living, which is a higher-income, a little higher area. But same thing, I mean, those folks would also like to have better access to transit.
Thank you.
And along that same road, I mean, you know, there's a new 84 house, housing development right out there. Again, getting close to the county-city line out there. There's another 168 units that are going to go out there.
Is that closer to Havana?
That one, I'm looking at the map right now.
Because we do, we do plan to have service next year extend along Frederick and Upriver Drive east of Green Street.
Okay. Okay.
In September of next year. So we're building bus stops right now. But but that's actually, you know, that particular section between Green and Mission used to have bus service in the early 2000s. It was in the single digits today, it's very low. So it speaks to kind of, there are those stopgap areas where, at that stage, you know, the bus isn't very efficient either. And so being able to find, you know, those those opportunities in between is really helpful.
Yeah, the one I'm talking about is right at the Upriver Dam, right there on Upriver and Frederick. That's right there. And there's another 168 going out there.
And there's, and the Beau Rivage already has hundreds, and it's been a, it's been an issue for a long time.
Yeah.
And so we're really excited. It was, for 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 lack of drivers, postponed till next year, but it was initially, we were going to have bus services this year out there.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I haven't said one word.
I know. Now's your chance.
You've been very good. Just real quickly, so I'm I'm kind of with Councilmember Cathcart in that I know there have been a lot of concerns in in District 3 about those areas that don't have access. And so I guess my thinking is, I I hope moving forward that there's some good, good, good ways for STA to reach out to those areas and to hear those voices and to bring them in to see what kind of solutions might be available. But that's really the biggest frustration that I hear. And the next one usually is buses don't come fast enough. We want to get on and off, on and off. We don't want to wait 20 minutes for a bus. And I know that's in discussion, and that's going to continue to be a discussion. But my big priority would just be to be aware of those areas that don't have the service that are asking for it, and that there's some way to have those discussions and invite those people in to talk about what else might work for them.
That's great feedback.
Okay, anybody else? This is not your last chance, by the way, to talk. We know where he lives.
We know where you live, yes.
Carl, thanks so much.
Thank you so much, yeah. You'll hear more from me, I'm sure.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Next up is strategic initiative funding. Tanya Wallace, Steve McDonald, Kim Orlob, and we have 20 minutes allotted for that, so about noonish, give or take.
Thank you. And Jacoby, are you going to work that for me, or? Thank you. So, yes, councilmembers, this was actually a request to bring forward to an update on this historic, really historic, strategic investment program, I mean, that was put together many, many years ago, almost a decade ago. And it has continued on through this administration, and here we are. This was actually a request of Council President Beggs, and it has taken many, many staff hours to reconcile this enormous and complex program that is multi-year, multi-department, and multi-millions of investments into the community. I do want to just quickly introduce Kim Orlob, who is right there. She is one of our fantastic accounting managers that has been really the coordinator and overseeing the reconciliation and the tracking of all of these projects, all of these dollars, that honestly takes, if I just had to guess, at least 100 hours of staff time every year to reconcile at the end of a closeout of a fiscal year and track to see where everything's at and check up with the project managers, the several project managers that are watching over these programs. And we do have Spencer Gardner out there. I'm not sure if we have the rest of the team, but there's many people involved in this. So I'm going to give you a little bit of the historical context, and then we're just going to kind of walk through the status by category or focus area, and then really talk about how we're going to close this six years of investment programming by the end of '23. So next, this is not intended for you to really read all of those pictures up there, but it is very graphical to say, there was a lot of work that went into this. It actually started as a joint collaborative effort between the City Council and the executive branch in 2014. But it took years of work where by December of 2017, there was a draft. So you can see, it was three years of hard work and collaboration to come up with, what is this investment program going to look like for the community? And then at the end of the last administration, there was a two-year action plan that was approved. But if you, you can't really see very well, but on the top picture, it was not imagined that it would just stop with the two years of action plan, but that the Woodward administration would carry that through the next four years. And that's where we are today, is at the end of this really great strategy. So the funding strategy involved and looked at from that two-year action plan of almost $52 million of investment. So a lot of funding going into the community. So next, again, not intended for you to see the details, but to see the colors. With the colors, it was the four key focus areas, innovative infrastructure, urban experience, safe and healthy and sustainable resources, which is exactly how the committees have been structured to focus around those areas. So the colors really do represent something very important. The columns that you see up there is the vast array of funding sources. So again, very complex, involves a lot of folks in the community and in the departments, and then leadership as well. So next, I'm going to just walk you through each of these areas, the four different colors, starting with innovative infrastructure, which had nearly $17 million in total, going through that. And you can see everything that has been completed, there's almost $13 million of investments, a vast majority of these projects have been completed to date. The rest is encumbered, about $3 million is encumbered to move forward. I do want to point out, one of the programs, the PDA impact fee waiver, that is still the same original $1 million that it started with. It is still there. It is encumbered, and I do believe staff will be bringing forward the program that requires your approval so that we can then get that moving and making progress on that piece as well. A few of those others that are encumbered are still pending, either matching, but there are agreements in place. There's just a few little ticks and ties that are still outstanding on those, but we do anticipate making some great strides in all of that. The variance that you see down at the bottom is really where funding, because we go budget and then we have actuals, in some cases, not all of the funding was actually available, or in some cases, with some of the streets and utilities, it was grant-funded, but the project came in under budget. So that's just the variance, the difference. Part of the funding sources, too, in a lot of this, was the surplus of properties. So we had a target of how much proceeds we anticipated receiving from the sale of proceeds, proceeds from the sale of properties, but sometimes that doesn't always materialize as you expect, or the properties get redirected for other purposes. Looking at urban experience, this was a next category with 15.5 million anticipated for investment into these projects. And a vast majority of that is also completed, the Sportsplex PFD funding of $5 million being the largest, and of course, we now get to enjoy that Sportsplex and all that it brings to the community. And then many of those that are encumbered right now, another $3 million or so encumbered, is pending, but most of that we anticipate being completed by the end of 2023.
Tanya, where the, where are the dollars encumbered at? Like, is there a fund that these sit in, a strategic initiatives fund?
They're in multiple funds, actually.
Okay.
That's what makes this a little bit complex. Sometimes they're in solid waste, sometimes they're in sewer or water. When it comes to, it might be in development services, might be in streets, depends on the project. So it's across the board. But if you, if there's something specific that you'd want, we will certainly dive deep on that.
We're confident, though, that those dollars are, in fact, set aside and and that they are there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I would add, it would be nice to have a list of where they are, so we know.
We can do that for you. Yep. Committed, these, now here, they're not contracts, it's not encumbered, but it is still dedicated funding within the fund committed for these purposes that were originally agreed upon. And again, the variance is either the the actual funding did not materialize largely from grants or sale of surplus, or that's just the variance, the difference, the project was completed. For example, let's say the Trail, the Trail River Access Improvement Projects from REIT, the project just came in under budget, but it's completed.
Go ahead.
Whatever happened with the McKinley School?
It's still floating.
Is it, is there anything going on there?
That was the CSO tank, I think they're talking about.
Is that the CSO tank?
I think it's still in the works, it's just moving really slow.
Okay.
Because remember, we had to make a few comp plan changes and some stuff, and I think that delayed kind of the whole.
But I think that this is talking about the CSO.
Okay.
We had to delay because of the the level of the aquifer that was right there, so you could only do construction certain times of the year.
Okay. Hmm, okay.
Tanya, the, sorry.
Yes, sir.
On the the Ridpath, Falls Tower, et cetera, when were those allocated or set aside? Was that going back kind of four or five years?
I'm not sure, but we can get the answer.
Okay.
For you.
What, are you asking about the loan or about the money that was given to?
Well, just trying to understand the the program that we're talking about, I guess.
So remember, we had that money that had been sequestered for 15 years, and it could only be used for a specific purpose?
Yeah.
And so when the investors came and asked for that, so the Ridpath could be reconfigured for really low-income folks, it, we expected it would get paid back, but we weren't going to hold our breath.
Right.
And the Ridpath is still has a ways to go.
Yeah.
To get that.
But they're going to come for these dollars, though, at some point? Is that?
Potentially. I mean, these were all done in that same timeframe when this was all put together. And so those were set aside. You'll see another one that also had the Falls Tower for a $10,000 sewer improvement. That's in a developer agreement that's outstanding, so if that moves ahead in the timeline of the contract, that still is available. But it, you know, it's, so there's individual contracts for some of these things that could expire or have different changes. So it's not necessarily something that, at some point, after five or six years, developer agreements tend to expire. So those things may need to be renegotiated, or they may no longer be valid.
Okay.
So, safe and healthy, a majority of this is, it's really completed, and we anticipate all of these projects to to be completed by the end of 2023 for sure. The largest one there is the Public Safety Equipment and Vehicles. That was funded through SIP loan proceeds. And then I think the one that Council President specifically has questions on is that homeless, available, and affordable housing. And that was really started with about $2 million anticipated from REIT funding, but at the time, REIT is not eligible for that. So the General Fund put in the $2 million, and REIT went to for streets projects, and we just pulled $2 million from streets and put it over here. So either way, still $2 million for that specific project. Most of it has been spent over that timeframe. The remainder of that specific amount is that $961,000 that you see that is encumbered and is contracted with Habitat for Humanity and Truth in Ministries, and has been for for some time over that duration.
And is that where the first million went, then, was to those two organizations?
Those two organizations, and I believe about three or four other organizations, but we can certainly send you those details as well, and you can see exactly when and how much to those organizations.
And so there's 961 left. What what is the, I guess, what's what's the agreement with those organizations? What what's, what would they be coming back to us to request next, I guess?
Well, there is a contract in place, so they would not necessarily be coming back to Council for a request of any kind. There's 805,000 encumbered and contracted with Habitat for Humanity for one of their programs, and then 156,000 encumbered with Truth Ministries.
Okay.
So it's, it's.
So they're contracted.
Yeah, if they come forward, if they bring their reimbursement request for funding that follows those contracts, then we will provide that funding to them.
Okay.
And it does seem to be a little bit of a trickle on that. We do anticipate the SEP TED projects to be completed by the end of this year. One of the projects that we actually did up there, the 118, was redo that that corner by the multimodal center, particularly with the the area asking for a lot to be done with that corner. So we've done a lot of really great work there. And then the utility assistance program is moving along, and we have the new UIS system, so there's a lot more work that can be done there. Again, you can see the variance is lack of funding from surplus property. And then lastly, sustainable resources. All of this has basically been committed, and I will sell, say, the General Fund reserves is the largest component of that. So we did stand up those reserves from '18, '19, and add the $2.5 million, but under the Woodward administration, particularly in '21, we actually shored those up and hit those targets of the 10% and the 3.5%. So a lot of really great work there. Spencer is, or Mr. Gardner, is working on finishing up that sub-area planning for the Monroe area, and then this one will also be closed out by the end of '23. Really, on next steps, this this is just really a summary of all those projects that are in progress that we're tracking right now from those different focus areas. And you can see the total amount, 8.7 million. So just from my own perspective, I think the city has done a really great job of of investing over $50 million into the community over these last six years, given a pandemic and the slowdown and everything that has disrupted the progress of this. Our ultimate goal is to clean these up, as as Marlene pointed out, review these contracts, see how they move forward, but ultimately to not be tracking them. It takes a whole lot of staff administrative time to track them under this model, but really to reaffirm pending projects and make reallocation suggestions. If we find that the funding is there, we can unencumber and move forward with other priorities of the city.
Go ahead.
If, yeah, just one, one more thing, it'd be great to have, not to put more on your plate, but just in the con, in, as we discuss budget stuff, it'd be great to just have a column that shows, you know, kind of when when the pending status would conclude, so we we will know for sure that the money is going to be spent or not, so that we can kind of account for, you know, what what might be possible, whether it's this year or, you know, a year down the road. But I think that would be just helpful to have that as a column on that list.
Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, the Beacon Hill Development here, the water booster, the the pending of this 800,650 has already gone out, is that correct, for the for the booster station out there?
I don't have the answer to that.
I thought it was 450.
Marlene, is that what we were talking about yesterday?
So, um, the Beacon Hill.
Don't start talking to you in the microphone.
The Beacon Hill Developer Agreement is a total of $800,650 for the booster station and 150 for the tank. If, it's possible, we haven't paid it out yet.
Gotcha.
But I believe that booster station bill is coming, and then we have the discussion about the tank, they haven't gotten that far yet. So that is, so I'd have to double-check and see if that was included. I'm not seeing Beacon Hill on this list.
I think I got one down.
Oh, yeah. So so that, so 650 of that 800 is the booster station, 150 is the tank.
The tank, right.
So, obviously pending because I believe the booster station is done or close to done, so we would do that on a reimbursement.
Okay.
And then the other 150, we kind of have in limbo at this point, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I do. I'm sorry, are you, is that it? Is there more?
Yes, that is it.
Okay. So Councilmember Stratton and I were actually there when all this happened. I have a different memory of how this unfolded. It was very much a collaborative effort, and Rick Romero led the charge to create the strategic plan along with. strategic plan, along with Teresa Sanders at the time and Amber Waldorf. It was very much a collaborative effort. It was intended to end at the end of the Condon administration and not continue, and some of us council members said, that's probably not how we want to go. We've spent so much time working on this and getting this, and there was a lot of, you remember, it was not easy, there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of testiness around getting this, because we didn't necessarily all agree. And so, we did agree, however, that if you ended this after all this hard work at the end of the Condon administration, then we'd have to start all over again. So, the agreement was, let's review this and update it every two years and see where we're at. Well, that didn't happen, and I can, and it was supposed to be active document, not something you stick on the shelf. And what I'm seeing now is, it's become static, it desperately needs to be updated. It was a really good model to start with, but like anything else, you can't just leave it and expect that it's going to be relevant, you know, six, seven years later, which is where we're at right now. The other piece is that $51.9, $52 million was because we had a very conservative, fiscally conservative council at the time, regardless of whether they were liberal or, or not. We were all very fiscally aware, we worked very closely with the Condon administration to save that money. It was a good time, because the economy was fairly robust, and so, we had that extra money, and we were very deliberate with what we wanted to do and to invest it back into the community. So, it wasn't just that there was this money lying around, you remember this.
Oh, yeah.
It was that we were very deliberate about, let's invest this back in the community. And so, I want to be sure that we're getting the history right, because it was painful at the time, we walked through it, we got to a place where we all agreed. I'd hate to see it just languish, because that's what I feel like it's doing right now. We have not updated it, and it's desperately in need of updating. So, that's my pitch to those of you that are gonna be continuing on. Don't let this die, keep it fresh. Go ahead.
So, Councilmember Kinnear, I remember when Brian McClatchy was here, before he left, him and Lisa Gardner were working with the administration on a touch with this, and it stagnated, and it went nowhere. So, there was an effort, but it died, and then I don't know what happened after that.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
It would just be really, as I look at this, and I know some of the, some of the items that were, a lot of discussion went into, but some of these, I don't know, like, the Falls utility install, and then there's another 300,000 for the Falls Tower, where that's at? I mean, there's no, so it'd be great to have that information, because I've been sitting here saying to Michael, do you know where this one's at, or where's that? But it'd be nice to know where these are going, and then how long do we hold the money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long does it sit there and we wait for? And I know COVID had a lot to do with it, so there's gonna be a lot of delays, but that's just my two cents.
I wouldn't say COVID had, we passed this well before COVID.
Oh, I mean, as far as developers moving on with their developments and utilizing.
This money was pushed out into the community long before COVID.
Right, right.
So, I hesitate to always point at COVID and say, it was COVID.
Okay, I'm gonna say it's you.
It was my fault.
Anyway, that's just my suggestion.
Anybody else?
I'll see Millennium.
Well, I just like a little bit more clarity on, I don't have to have a margin of all the ones, but the big ones, I'd like to know as we budget when those do end, because I don't have any idea when those contracts will expire and that money will be reavailable to the general fund. I think that would be helpful as we do some planning.
Yep, we have that on our.
Is that column?
Well, I want to add that column.
Oh, you want to add that column?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, all right.
That was informative, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? We know where Tanya lives, too, so we can ask early. Right, thank you very much, Ms. Wallace. Next up is Real Estate Excise Tax Fund Conversation. Is this a true conversation, or are you gonna be doing a?
I'm doing a PowerPoint.
Oh, okay.
It's an educational opportunity. That one. So, I just wanted to, after we had this discussion about using REIT for homelessness, I just, I just wanted to go over sort of how REIT works and how it's traditionally been used, and why you sometimes see balances in that account. It doesn't mean it's not planned. So, I mean, really, this is a discussion, I'm hoping that we just provide you some information that you can use going forward. So, what is REIT? It's an excise tax on real estate sales. The state tax exists, it's, it's over 1%, it depends on the value of the sale, what the state actual rate is. And then, there are two local option taxes, which is what we care about, both at a quarter percent. So, REIT 1, they're very similar in their definitions, are for capital projects and maintenance. REIT 1 actually has a broader definition of capital projects. And then, REIT 2 is only available to city and counties who are in compliance with GMA and are fully planning under GMA, but also for capital projects and some maintenance. In Spokane, we have used REIT as a traditional funding source for streets. So, REIT 1 is primarily used for street department activities, projects to repair and construct streets, and REIT 2 is put into, primarily into the arterial street fund. It can support other capital projects, which we did when, since REIT went up in the last couple of years, and we'll talk about that. So, I'm gonna take you back to 2014, and our citizens approved a 20-year arterial street plan. We replaced, we had the street bond that sold in 2004, and we had done 10 years' worth of projects, but we had 20 years of debt. And so, we refinanced the debt, we created a levy for the same cost per thousand, we stretched out the debt to go to 2034 and created an investment in our street system, and that included the levy. There were three components to that, really, the maintenance, keep the good street good, manage the poor streets, we do these integrated streets, full rebuilds, like you saw on East Bragg and North Monroe, downtown on the Lincoln Monroe corridor, those are the kinds of integrated street concepts. And then, we also have sort of this flexibility in what to do when things don't fit into these buckets very easily, and how we have sort of these incremental solutions. Our goal is an average pavement rating at the end of this of 70. To get to that promise to the citizens, we, we anticipated using levy dollars, a match from the utilities of $5 million, federal and state grants, obviously, but also REIT, you can see in that column, it's just a clip from a slide from a long time ago. And what I can tell you is the levy's not growing at the same clip as we anticipated then. We owe you a mid, a 10-year review in 2024, so we'll do that, then we're gonna focus today on REIT. The utility match also was held static at 5, so REIT is helpful, because it does grow over time, although it's quite volatile, as we'll discuss. So, our community supported this concept. You know, we asked yes for parks, yes for streets, and we had a 77.6% yes vote, which is pretty impressive.
When was that?
In 2014. And so, that was our levy for improved and integrated streets. And so, because REIT comes from real estate transactions, the amount raised annually is, it does really go up and down, depends on both the sales volume and, and value. And so, in '21 and '22, REIT was very strong. Kevin told me that the high year was '21, and it was probably $6.5 million for, for each of those REIT components, right? Because it's the same amount, it's that quarter percent. In 2023, REIT has been generating significantly less. We're on pace right now to have a year at about $4.4 million. So, you know, per, per REIT, so when you, when you look at that, that, it's a several-million-dollar swing. And so, we do try to budget REIT on a more even basis to sort of weather those ups and downs. For 2023, as you know, 35% of available REIT could be used for homelessness support, which is what you approved on Monday. So, I'm just gonna kind of go over this. There was some question about that opening balance, and so, Kevin Zollinger in accounting, who works for Kim, provided us with opening balance numbers that were revised yesterday. And so, he's, for REIT 1, the opening balance was 8.3 million. We're currently on pace for that 4.4 million. It could go up a little bit, REIT tends to, generally speaking, collect more in the second half of the year than the first half of the year. I guess people buy houses in the summer and the spring, and then that kind of is a trailing indicator. So, we could, we could actually surpass that 4.4 a little bit. There's the 4.7 million that is anticipated for homelessness at this point. And so, Street Department, we've, in recent years, provided $4 million out of REIT 1 for those street department projects. There's only $2.9 million available for the street department, we'll have to backfill that with REIT 2. And then, you can see these other non-public works projects. So, effectively, when REIT was coming in stronger, we used some of that to pay for some asset management projects, like the roof on this building. So, and then, when we moved, again, another amount of money into homelessness assistance, we effectively double-budgeted the excess REIT at this point. So, that's what we're seeing here with a zero balance forecast at the end of the year. Like I said, there's a little bit of play potentially in, in the revenue. And then, with that opening balance, 4.7 is, you know, sort of the wag right now, maybe for 2024. Again, we'd have enough to put $3.1 million into streets instead of the traditional 4, we'd backfill that with REIT 2, and then there's some lagging work on those non-public work projects. So, that leaves us, again, at zero for REIT 1. At REIT 2, our opening balance for 2023 is 14.2. Projected revenue, again, that 4.4 million could, could vary a little bit. For homelessness, we did allocate $1 million out of REIT 2 for homelessness for the capital project at Trek, and then there's the backfill for the street department projects. We have $14.5 million in budgeted for capital improvement projects in REIT for 2023. Some of that is flexible spending, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So, if we were to spend all of that money, we'd be at a $2 million ending fund balance. We'd have, start that with 2024, again, there's some projected revenue, nothing anticipated for homelessness at this point, the backfill from the previous phase for the street department, and then we have planned $8.2 million in capital improvement projects with a, which would take us to a negative balance. So, let me talk about flexible spending. So, we do anticipate at times that we're gonna have needs, emergent needs that come up. We have bids that come in higher than we anticipate. REIT is a great source of funding for that volatility in our street system. We also try to, if we don't hit on a grant, we don't want to let money sit around and wait for the next year for when that grant might come in, we like to put it to work. So, that's the other thing that we're trying to do, is to be able to continue to put money into the system. So, if we don't hit on a grant for a bigger project, we try to then put money into continuing the list of grind and overlay work that Clint maintains, and put money into those projects, and sometimes that requires a little extra REIT to get some of that done, and then still have the ability to come in and do that capital project that, that didn't get the grant. So, so we do have some, some play in these numbers. I do not actually anticipate that will go below, that will end negative, but I just want you to understand that that's what this is, is really kind of a fluid source, and it works pretty well. Thank you, Councilmember.
Are you gonna talk a little bit about the, the practical or, or real impact of the 4.7 and kind of how that maybe affects existing projects or, or forthcoming projects?
Right, so, so right now, you know, I think we'll, we'll end up in the black, but what we try to do is really collect the 2023 amount and not spend it until 2024, because it's such a volatile source. So, I, I mean, we started this year with a $6 million budget for REIT. We, we're not hitting $6 million. So, so that's kind of where it ends up. Because we had some flexibility, what we're gonna do is we're gonna roll back some of those flexible projects. We will not put extra, a lot of extra projects into the community, as we had hoped, over the next two years. We do have a long list of projects that Kevin and Nick provided to me, and remember, REIT is like small pockets of money for lots of projects, because it ends up being the grant match, it ends up being the grant match for a study. So, we do those kinds of things over time.
But are, are the bulk of those projects actual community projects, street projects, or are they a lot of like asset management and things like that?
Their bulk, the bulk of them are street projects.
Okay.
So, part of Post Street, part of Thorre Freya, Garland Pathway, Illinois Grind and Overlay and Shared Pathway, the Pacific Avenue Greenway Study.
Are you saying these are at risk?
No, I'm saying that this is where REIT's going. REIT's going into scores of projects. I literally have two pages of projects where there's some REIT going into them. And Safe Route to Schools, there's a project near Bemis. I mean, so we use those, and, and what we know about REIT is, yes, it's volatile, but it's also pretty flexible. So, bike and pet projects, for example, the levy, we really did talk about street conditions with our citizens. What does the pavement look like, whether that's for bikes or, or for cars? But the pedestrian projects off of that, or the separated trail projects, REIT is a much better source, because it doesn't, it, it, we didn't make that, we, we set aside levy for pavement conditions, the, the, the end result is a 70 pavement rating. So, in this case, if we're doing trails off, REIT is a really great matching source versus levy. So, we, we use that a lot. Projects take small amounts to get through the design process, but then we need a match that's a little bigger for, for the construction, so REIT helps us with that. And we have great unpredictability in the bidding environment right now, so we had some really good bids at the beginning of the year, our bids are not so good right now. And that happens sort of cyclically, but also the cost of construction has still been really up and down. The availability of labor for our contractors has led to different costs. So, so we, we try to keep some REIT set aside, so that we can, we can accommodate those changes that we, we don't know. And we also want to respond to emergent concerns. If you recall, we did come forward and said, we're gonna use some of those flexible dollars to pay for the additional amount for the South Suspension Bridge in the park. And so, that's where $1.4 million is going. Strong Road doesn't score well. The, the ability for us to get a grant, really, to fix Strong Road is, is gonna be really tough. In the meantime, we have this heavy maintenance project that will happen this year, and that's $1 million that's gonna happen out of that flexible REIT fund. Washington Stevens Bridge Deck is another one, we haven't been able to hit on that, but if you drive across the Washington Stevens Corridor, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And so, that's gonna happen next year with, with REIT dollars. And so, this is what we're trying to do, and so, our concern is not so much that this particular spend on homelessness is going to make or break REIT, but it can't be, if we're going to commit our commitment to the citizens around streets, we have to continue to prioritize streets for REIT funding over other projects. And that is my concern, and that is why I really wanted to talk to you today. You know, 3.9, I was expecting, 4.7 was a little more than I wanted, because I, we like to have that, that ability to deliver what we promised to citizens. And my bigger concern, though, is that we don't see REIT as a way to fill holes all across the system, because then we will fail in our commitment to citizens that we promised them with the, with their yes vote on the levy. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, we're gonna monitor closely REIT spending and, yes.
Caskart, then Bingle.
I just want to see a list of projects that are, you said, two years, we're gonna see cuts in streets, so I just want to know what projects that are at risk over those two years.
So, we're be backing, we're backfilling in streets with REIT 2, and I do have flexible amounts in here, so we will not specifically cut a project.
So, nothing will get cut?
Nothing will get cut at this point, but over time, I, this is what I'm saying, it wasn't that I was here to tell you that I'm gonna have to cut something today, but that we're limiting our flexibility, and the, the less money we have to play with, the less money I have to go after grants and continue to keep things rolling, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty frustrated with the amount of money that's, that's coming out of REIT, which I'm, I'm sure everybody is in a similar position, understanding that this is what it's going for. But I, actually looking at the, at the numbers in here, felt like, when I was being talked to on Monday, that there was actually a lot more money in here than there is, and so, we might have to go back and, and talk about that a little bit more. But I was speaking with Cheryl Stewart from AGC the other day, and she had mentioned that in the state's recent budget, that there were no preservation dollars from the state, or at least very little. Do you, is that accurate?
Yeah, you know, so, these things ebb and flow, right? So, what, availability of grant dollars sort of kind of goes with trends, right? So, for a while, we had lots of grant dollars for stormwater. For a while, we had lots of grant dollars for pavement preservation. Right now, there's, there's been more for bike and pet, as they've moved anticipated Climate Commitment Act dollars in, and are funding more bike, pet, and transit. So, so we watch those trends and try to adjust our projects and, and pick out the ones that we think are gonna be the most successful. Pavement preservation over the years has always been challenging, it's sort of like, everybody likes to pay for the new capital, but nobody likes to pay. pay for the bread and butter. And so it, that is always a challenge, and she's absolutely right there. But we also know that we're really not looking to add a whole bunch of new lanes anyplace. We're really trying to make sure that we have smooth streets, that we deal with the underground infrastructure when we do, so we get the best value for the citizens. And rebuilds and grind and overlays really is how we stretch. That grind and overlay is a really great tool, that we stretch the life of the pavement. So when we did the rebuild from the 2004 bond, if we do the grind and overlay and the crack seal and the pothole repairs at the right time, those dollars that we spent to rebuild last so much longer. We really can make streets that last for decades if we do the proper maintenance at the right time and don't allow the surfaces to really get marred up so the water gets in and we have the free-slaw cycle that ultimately pops it up.
Could I ask Mr. Boston to come up? I have a few questions. Don't leave, Marlene. And it has to do with, we have other pots of money. We have TBD money, we have red light money. And I'm trying to get my head around how we could integrate all those different pots to extend and stretch your dollars. So could you address that, please?
Yeah, I mean, Marlene and I have talked, and really, at the end of the day, I mean, I think what this body needs to do is really determine what the priorities are, right? Right now, what we're doing is we have a lot of grabs at all of the different pots of money that we have, right? We have public safety, that's a high priority. We have homelessness, that's a high priority. We have streets, that's a high priority. We're throwing an exorbitant amount of money at each one of those priorities, but we're not saying, hey, we're going to tackle that and we're going to do it 100%. We have the ability, just like REIT, with traffic calming, just like criminal justice, just like all of these different pots of money, to look at things and say, okay, well, yeah, we can pull from this for this priority, right? I mean, REIT is a prime example. Criminal justice is a prime example, where it wasn't necessarily laid out within the legislature to use those dollars for that exact purpose, but the legislature is giving a little bit of flexibility. The problem that I think, or the challenge that I think that we have had to get to that point is to not talk about this conversation holistically, to say, okay, what are all of our problems? What are all of our priorities? I mean, again, and Marlene and I talked about this a little bit yesterday, saying, okay, we have a 20-gallon bucket that's sitting on the table. We have 25 gallons of water that we have to put into that bucket. If we don't decide what the five gallons are going to, that are going to be left on the table, then we're just going to be throwing money at things haphazardly and not getting things done the way that we want to get them done, completed, and 100%. You know, I mean, streets, the REIT fund, yes, it's a challenge, as well as the criminal justice fund. It's another challenge that we have because, just like REIT, criminal justice will be depleted if we use all of that money for homelessness. Now, we're talking about things and how we're going to restrategize things, and we're talking about, just like you said, Councilmember Keneer, the traffic calming and the red light and those funds. Those can be used for street-type capital projects that we haven't explored. I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at those budgets for different things. And yes, are they priorities? I don't know. That's up for you to decide. But we have to look at each one of those budgets collectively with all of those things to say, okay, these are our top three priorities. Let's invest 100% in those three priorities until those get, until we can check the box on each one of those. Marlene, you know, is working on her plan that was set out in 2014. So, I mean, I agree 100% to subvert some of those funds to homelessness. That was a part of her strategy when she was looking at this back in 2014. Now, granted, things shift, but we're talking about things isolated. You know, the homelessness conversation was an isolated conversation of talking about, hey, we need to find this funding. Yeah, 4.7, it's not going to make or break. We know that while we're looking at capital plan, we know that we normally don't spend 100% of the budget year over year. So there is, like she said, some flexibility in those different plans that we have, that we're not going to completely bust streets and their plan. But if we start doing that on an ongoing basis and say, okay, we're going to pull it REIT, and we're going to pull it at criminal justice, and we're going to pull it this and that and that for all of these sporadic priorities, it's going to make a challenge for the ones that we've identified in the past and to hit those as successful goalposts.
Well, it's worth noting, too, that we're going to be installing 20 additional cameras. So that pot of money is going to grow. And it would be nice to have a plan where we can integrate some of that with some of your projects so that we're not just relying on REIT. And the other thing, too, is I would like to look back to perhaps 2014, the REIT, what was in REIT in 2014, and look forward. Is there a trend? So was it going like this? Was it going like this? It would be nice to have those numbers so that we're not looking at just three years, but we're looking at maybe 10.
Right.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, since we're talking about big ideas, I, this is something I talked about four years ago, and of course, COVID and then our financial everything just has made it a hard conversation. But if we're going to be planning and really thinking big about the future, I think we really need to cultivate a much larger residential streets program. And we have a lot of residential streets that literally haven't been touched in 50 years or more. And I think we've got to come up with something. And it could include the camera revenue. It could include a whole lot of things. But I think that's a conversation and strategy we need to put together.
And I agree completely. And I think Councilmember Keneer's point is well taken. When we started the traffic calming project, it was $700,000 that we were turning into, you know, some small things that the neighborhoods wanted. The list of projects that's in front of, is $73 million. So, and it's not repaving. And so, and that fund with extra cameras, I don't know, eight, nine, $10 million a year is what that program could. And no money right now for maintenance of the things that we are putting in in those neighborhoods. And I think we need to think about that because when I think about if I could put half of that money into the residential program, that doubles the residential program. Or we also looked at dirt streets, and how long? It'd take 100 years, right? Or something. I mean, if we could, if we could take, that's actually serious cash now, the traffic calming program. And we have to decide, I think, whether speed humps are in a neighborhood is more important than actually addressing neighbors who have dirt streets. Because I think when you look about a livability issue, it's much more concerning to me that someone live in front of a dirt street. And so, and we can argue about how they got a dirt street, but it's 20 or 30 years ago and we didn't require it. And so there's no way to go back and fix that, really, in many cases. The ones that could be fixed, where people were affluent enough to pay for an LID, those are done, right?
Well, we got it addressed on CITCA, which is one I had been asking for for a long time. And part of the reason was because it was creating air quality issues for the people that live there.
Absolutely.
You know, for not only for their health, but livability and, you know, dust all over their house and yard. And so it was a big issue.
Yeah, for sure.
Who else? Remember, this is a discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, to go to the like big picture ideas, that I think some of the, a lot of these projects for traffic calming and all of these projects are great, but I think they are very costly and we should be looking at the cheaper options of things. So looking at sidewalks that aren't a half a million dollars, but rather like taking wheel stops and bollards and creating a surface out of a large right-of-way street and creating a walkway spot or curb bumpouts that are more bollards and other types with painting and stuff like that that are much cheaper. That way, we can stretch the dollars a lot farther. For some projects that can do that, whereas other projects where you're redoing a street or putting in a light or redoing stairs or something like that, there are no cheaper options. So I think we got to talk about that because a lot of these projects that the neighborhoods are coming to us with traffic calming are very costly for sidewalk or curb bumpouts and stuff like that when there are cheaper options around that.
And if we could package them more as a funding source for things that we're seeking grants for, that's another way to do it, too, is, you know, when we package sidewalk infill with a street project, that's less expensive. You're mobilizing once rather than when you're just doing the block of sidewalks. So there's ways that if we can start looking at that as a funding source that adds into our comprehensive program and allows for some maintenance of the things that we're putting in. We all know that we could do more work on green area maintenance. We put in green area as part of things like traffic calming and improvements on corridors. And then, and then we don't do a great job on the other end. And so I'd love to have that kind of conversation, which is, how do we put in the things that make the most impactful difference, and how do we take care of it going forward?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, on that pot of money, just so long as we're, yeah, being mindful of what people have understood those, you know, dollars to be used for, and make sure that we're not doing something completely out of left field. But just make sure that we're mindful of how we're using those dollars there.
And I think that's why I asked for that 10-year look because I don't, I want to see the trends over time, not just three years.
Yeah, I can get a look at...
Yeah, that would be really helpful. Anybody else? Go ahead.
And I'll just remind us all that none of us planned for this homeless issue that we're facing. And the opportunity to use that REIT money that was given to us by the legislature to make those kind of decisions, that's just through this year. So that's just, as painful as it is on one end, it has helped us on the other end. But it kind of made us wake up and pay attention as to what do we need to do next.
Right. Michael, what here wasn't to tell you the sky was falling. It was just to provide you with context. That's it.
And I knew that, Marlene, but I just wanted to, you know, remind us, like, thank you. We need to have the conversation. It needs not to be in a silo because some of us know and some of us don't know really what the whole scope is going on down there and what's coming before. So thank you for that.
Anybody else? I think this has been a great conversation. Thanks for the PowerPoint. And let's not end it here. Let's stay connected and receive updates and meet regularly so that we can have a, carve a path forward with Mr. Boston's help, too.
I would very much appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we are at the end of our agenda. Our, no meeting on Monday. Don't show up here on Monday. Next meeting is next Thursday, just another study session. So have a great weekend. Enjoy your day off, and we'll see you next Thursday. Thanks. We're adjourned.